Thank you. Good morning, everyone. This is the Ordinary Council meeting for the 25th of January 2024, being held here at One Nicholas Street in Ipswich, and the time is 9:01. I welcome all, and I can see quite a few new faces in the Public Gallery, which is always wonderful to see. Any members of the public are welcome to come and join our council meetings. We have quite a packed agenda today. It's the last council meeting of this council before caretaker provisions start on Monday. So we'll be making quite a few decisions today and in other council meetings before the election. There'll be, we can still make decisions, but they won't be at the same dollar value and might be making major policy decisions. So I'll start by calling attendants, and I can see everyone in attendance. Good morning to you all. I'll now hand over to Council Kunselman for the acknowledgement of country.
Thank you, Mayor. Chair, sorry. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people.
Thank you, Council Kunselman. And now move on to our opening prayer. We're very fortunate this morning to have Pastor Rob Howl from the Beacon Community Baptist Church here with us this morning. I'll ask Pastor Bob to come forward. Thank you, Pastor. Do you just mind saying your name, the church, and feel free to talk about what you do, as well as the prayer?
Okay, thank you. So my name is Reverend Robert Howells. I am the community outreach pastor of Beacon Community over at Brussels. I also run the Beacon Wellbeing Hub at Leichart, which was my former church, where I've been a part of for 16 years. So I was brought up in Ipswich, lived here almost all my life. Dad was RAF. And so, yeah, we've enjoyed living here and will continue to enjoy living here for many years to come, I'm sure. So thank you for the opportunity to be able to pray for you this morning. And so if you feel led to, just please bow your heads as I pray. So God above, as our city leaders come together to discuss the business of leading Ipswich and her peoples forward into an uncertain future, we ask that you grant them wisdom in their deliberations, insight into what is required and a sense of justice and mercy for those that they lead. I thank you for all our council workers and the roles that they play to enhance our lifestyles, and especially for Mayor Harding, each of our divisional representatives and their support workers that enable them to represent each Ipswich resident to the best of their ability. Guide them in their roles, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Rob. Appreciate that. I now move on to, I have no apologies with leave of absence. Are there any apologies or leaves as absences from the floor? No? Item five, condolences, there are none. Item six, tributes, there are none. So move on to item seven, which is the presentation of petitions. And we have, there is a petition that was received and referred to the appropriate council department for investigation, and that was the petition on the residential units development along WM Hughes Street, North Ipswich. So I will move that the petition be received and referred to the appropriate council department for investigation and report back to the relevant committee. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Fekner. I'll now open up for discussion, and in moving this, I'll say that I'm pleased to receive this petition. The concerns raised by Wood End, Moor's Pocket, Ipswich Central and Basin Pocket residents are not theirs alone. Residents on both sides of the rivers and creeks throughout Ipswich don't want to be living in fear of flooding, particularly if it's avoidable. I note that this petition relates to a development application that's currently in progress, and I can reassure residents that the council will take all planning concerns into account while it's being assessed. I'll open up for other discussion. Council Fekner?
Thanks, Chair. I just want to thank particularly the residents in Division Three at Wood End who were driving this petition. They approached Marnie and I on several occasions, and we actually took the time to meet with them to understand their concerns and to step them through the process that council goes through when considering an application. We also took the opportunity to foreshadow and highlight some of the issues that they've had with our council planning department as well. So their concerns are very much on the record here, and we trust that Planning and Regulatory Services will take that into consideration when assessing the application.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? No? I put that matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and adopted. Thank you. And then move on to item eight, which is the presentations and deputations, there are none. Item nine is public participation, there is none. Item 10, matters of public interest, there is none. We now move on to declarations of interest in the matters of the agenda, and I understand that Council Fekner and Councilor Madison both have declarations.
Thank you, Chair. In accordance with Section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, I, councillor Andrew Fekner, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in items number 15.1, titled Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee Report, and 16.13, Ipswich Children's Art Gallery Option. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest are my interests in both Bah Heisenberg Proprietary Limited and A1A Events Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town. I plan on dealing with this conflict by leaving the room while the matter is considered and voted on. Matters, rather.
Thank you, Council Fekner.
Thank you, Chair. And in accordance with Section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, I, councillor Jacob Madison, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 15.1, Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee Report, and 16.13, Ipswich Children's Art Gallery Option. The nature of that declarable conflict of interest is until late last year, I was on the executive of the Ipswich Tradeshall and Labour Day Committee, and our building, the Ipswich Tradeshall, is adjacent to council's interests with the central redevelopment. As a result of that conflict, I'll leave the meeting room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you, Council Madison. Any other declarations? No? Okay, we move on to item 12, which is the confirmation of minutes. And 12.1 is the confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary meeting. So I'll move that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 7th of December 2023 be confirmed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll open up for any corrections or missions. There being none, I'll move that matter. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item 13.1, which is the mayoral minute on Ipswich Civics Programme. And this mayoral minute is to partner with the Speaker of the House of Representatives and Member for Oxley, the Honourable Milton Dick MP, to deliver a local version of the bipartisan federal programme Parliament in Schools for Ipswich students. Civics education has been a major focus of Mr Dick since his appointment to the role of Speaker, and the Parliament in Schools Programme was launched in September 2020 to make civics education accessible to students regardless of their location. So I'll move that council contribute in-kind support and its facilities to deliver a local version of the Parliament in Schools Programme in Ipswich in partnership with the Honourable Milton Dick MP. As a mayoral minute, it's moved and seconded. So speaking to it, I'd like to say that last year I was approached by one of our very passionate local federal members, the Honourable Milton Dick, about one of his true passions as Speaker of the House. Milton oversees the successful bipartisan Parliament in Schools Programme, which school students of all ages participate in when they visit Canberra. In recent years, Milton has expanded the programme by partnering with MPs across the nation and himself visiting some of the most remote schools in Australia to ensure all children have the opportunity to participate in the programme, regardless of where they live and whether they can travel to Canberra. We know that informed children make engaged adults when it comes to learning about democracy and government. So I commend Milton for his commitment to promoting civics education and share his passion for teaching children about what makes good government. Milton approached me about a partnership that would see a local version of the programme offered to Ipswich schools with the support of Ipswich City Council. This is the mayoral minute that we have before us today, and like me, I hope you all see the benefits of making this interactive programme available for our local school students. I'll now open up for other discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the recommendation before you to vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Move on to item 14.1, which is the response to petition stopped the odours from Swanbank Industries. I've emailed all the councillors this morning, just with a couple of amendments to that, in particular, recommendation C B, instead of Minister for Bundanba, Member for Bundanba. And including in C, the member for George should be capital M for Member. And also adding in D, Leanne Linnard, MP, Member for Najee, Minister for the Environment and Great Barrier Reef, Minister for Science and Innovation. So this is a report concerning a petition presented to the council ordinary meeting of the 7th of December by Ms Tracy Butler on behalf of residents and petitions in relation to the odours from Swanbank Industries. The resolution from that meeting was that this petition be referred to this meeting today. So I will move A, B, C and D, as you see before you, as I emailed this morning. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councillor Ireland. In speaking to this, I want to thank the 6,000 residents who signed the petition that was presented to council back in December and asking for action on the noxious odours in our city. Council has been asking for the waste companies to do the right thing, follow the law and make sure they are not impacting their neighbours with odours. Alongside the residents who signed the petition are those who have made one or more of the 27,000 odour complaints that have lodged, been lodged with the Queensland Government. This report details some of the actions council has taken to address this issue in the limited capacity that we can act on, which is enforcement of non-compliance with planning approvals. Council has successfully prevented the establishment of new or expanded landfills by Wanless, Landtrack and Cleanaway. We've stopped the building of Ramondas Building, an incinerator in Swanbank, and we have current legal action pending against Newgraw over alleged non-compliance with planning approvals. Council has led waste industry reform with a Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Policy Directive, which continues to make systemic changes across waste, resource recovery, recycling and circular economy in Ipswich. Residents have been fighting alongside council for a long time, and this petition shows that people have had absolutely enough and are prepared to band together to call for urgent change. We must prioritise the protection of the health and wellbeing of both our community and the environment for the future of our residents. I continue to call for the state to create legislation to compel the enclosure of organic composting facilities to minimise the impact of waste odours on our community. Council will continue to liaise with the state government members to raise nuisance odours, call for a public health inquiry and advocate for long-term solutions for waste odour issues. I'll absolutely be supporting the recommendations in this report. Councillor Ireland, as the second, would you like to make any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. The people at Ripley have been reporting these odours for 20 years that I'm aware of. They're actually over it now. They say nothing's changed, so they've given up doing it. I would support that all composters have to have a very short period of time to become in-vessel composting, because I think that will help the city if that happens. But I support everything that we've proposed today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. I vote for further discussion.
Just for consideration this morning, and I don't want to get into the drafting of any letters at the meeting this morning, but I think that it would be timely to include the fires that have been happening at the organic composting facilities in the letter of...
Okay.
So maybe the CEO could take that one on notice. I'd also like for the letter to include that this petition and any of the correspondence sent to the state would be included as a specific agenda item on the next meeting of the Joint Task Force, just to really bring it home that this is something that we're advocating for. I think the report's well-written. It really highlights what we can control in the sphere of local government here. But I guess the intention was always for us to reach to the state government to provide our support and advocacy alongside the community groups that have done a good job, you know, advocating for themselves and their communities as well.
Thank you, Council Fekner. I just think, yes, Council?
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, just want to concur with Council Fekner's comments. And I would, what I am looking for in recommendation D is quite a bit of detail. If we're going to advocate to the state for legislative change and tools, I would really love to see our council officers put their thoughts down. I know there is some great discussions going on within council, and they have some big picture or strategic ideas that they, you know, believe could bring about significant change. So I think, yeah, don't want to miss that opportunity in putting those thoughts forward.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other discussion? I guess just in summary, I just note that is a formal position of this council for us to advocate to the state for the composting to be invested or enclosed. That we have written to the state with that position that we have as a council. Last time I met with Minister Linnard, I personally emphasised that and told him the importance of that and gave us some detail as to how we think this should be done. And I think it's really important that we continue to fight for that. That'd be one of the legislative changes that we definitely fight for. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Next is item 14.2, which is an interim local law, Parking 2024. And this is a report concerning the proposed making of an interim local law for the purpose of regulating parking at 134 Parkland Drive, Springfield Central, pursuant to the resolution of the council of 24 August 2023. And there are three recommendations there, and I know this came out of, I think, a notice of motion from you, councillor Johnick. Would you like to move this particular?
Yes, I would like to. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a second for that? Thank you, Councillor Tully. As the member, would you like to speak to it first, Councillor Johnick?
I just think thanking the staff for taking this on and bringing this to us for actioning. And just, I guess, to talk to the need of these monitored or restricted car parks. There is car parks there for the YMCA Springfield Central Community Centre presently, but they aren't managed at all. We have nurses that run clinics in that, in that community centre on a daily basis. And we have elderly that can't park, along with pregnant mothers. And so I have been one of those, and it is very difficult sometimes to get all your kids and get your pregnant self on time to an appointment. So any help that we can give to the YMCA and their community programmes that run out of it, the better. So thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Tully. Do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I endorse the comments of councillor Johnick. It's a very difficult area at the moment. Technically, people can park there all day. And both the Springfield Central State High School and the YMCA facility are burdened by that fact. The technicality in this situation is that even though it is a car park and even though the council has erected a signage, it's not enforceable until it's reflected in the local law. And as we discussed the other day, there is the opportunity to look overall whether or not each individual car park in the city, which is on council-owned or controlled land, but which is not part of a road reserve, is capable of being identified for the enforcement of the local laws and illegal parking in a similar sort of way. So from now, this interim local law will take effect for six months, and it's an opportunity to have the controls in place which the community has been asking for for some time. But I'm certainly supportive of making this permanent so that the opportunities of lawfully parking there are limited to people who have got a genuine need to be there for up to two or three hours.
Thank you, Councillor. I'd like to ask a couple of questions of the relevant council officer. May I ask for them to come to the lectern, please?
Good morning. Brett Davy, General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services.
Thank you, Mr Davy. Just a few questions. How long has parking been available in this location?
I think the original car park was built in about 2011, then the school afterwards, and the PCYC 2018, or the community centre, 2018, 2019.
Okay. So if this does go through today, how will the community be informed? What's the comms around that so they're aware of the change in the parking there?
So obviously, the most obvious change will be the signs going up for parking regulation. In the past, with new areas to be regulated, we've issued a combination of flyers, put some call flutes up identifying that parking arrangements have changed, and in some circumstances even issued warnings in a formal sense before we've started to actually enforce the regulation.
So will there be communications with the school?
Yes, there'll be communications with the school. I believe there already has been communications with the school about the issue.
Not only one of the outcomes of this, if someone who's used to parking there all day will park there all day and now get a fine. Will there be any leeway or will there be a grace period for people who may not have received the flyer or have just not seen the signs?
We haven't traditionally introduced a formal grace period as such. So unfortunately, when, you know, when we do these changes, the ability to enforce leads to regulation. The concept is really about behaviour change rather than collecting fines. But unfortunately, if we've issued the flyers, we've done some warnings, we've put the call flutes up at a point in time, we'll have to start issuing fines.
Okay. So does that mean, if it's approved today, when would the signs change? When would it come to effect?
The signs won't be able to go up until we've completed the gazettele process.
Right.
So there'll be a week or two, and then we'll just have to double-check the timeframes of when the gazettele notice will go in the papers.
Will there be flyers put under residents' wind screens who park there at the moment?
Yeah, we can look at that. We've done that in the past. We just check on the timeframe of getting some of the flyers together if that's a desire.
Thank you, Mr Davy. I don't have any other questions. Are there any other questions, Mr Davy? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm speaking to this. I just think it's important to note that this change has been generated by the community for council to make this change. It's definitely not a revenue-raising exercise. It's about better community use of this area. And we note that visitors to the community centre found it really difficult to park close to the facility. And by implementing this regulated parking, our council is able to provide a safer, more efficient and equitable parking for those attending the facilities there. Is there any other discussion? Councillor Johnick, would you like to say a few words before going to the vote?
Just in relation to the YMCA, there are designated parks there for that centre of 16 out of a number of car parks already. And I know that the staff and volunteers have really done their best to manage the centre parking up until now. And they have a really great relationship with the neighbouring schools as well. But it's just, it's not effective in going forward, but the communication is definitely there.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now go on to 14.3, which is the lease for renewal over Trust Lane for Rosewood Showgrounds, 1 Railway Street, Rosewood. And it's looking at the, I guess what's colloquially called the lion's shed, the Rosewood Showground. It's recommending that there is a, recommendations A, B and C is looking to ensure that there's a disposal of a leasehold interest and enter into a trustee lease. Does anyone have any questions of the local or the relevant council officers on this matter? No? In that case, I will move recommendations A through to C. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll open it up for discussion. I guess mainly discussion. It's good to see that this process is formalised. I note that there was a land management plan back in 2019 for the showgrounds with all the land users, and that'll be updated this year. And I note that we've ensured that these arrangements are also coinciding with the camping management as well, which is good. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I see this as purely transitioning to the correct instrument to be used in this instance and continuation of that land management plan that you discussed. And that this shed in particular has been used in conjunction with the lease for the campground that is established on the showgrounds. So it follows through and is fitting and right.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to fourteen point four, which is the lease for renewal over freehold land at Community Park, Marburg for a shed at one oh eight Queen Street, Marburg. Again, this is a matter of disposing of the leasehold interest and moving into um entering a lease with the Marburg and District Residents Association. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer? No? In that case, I will remove recommendations A through to C. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Kunsman. Again, um, Marburg and District Residents Association are a great organisation. They utilise um this facility very well and I'll be supporting um this continuation. Councillor Kunsman, do you have anything to add as a second?
Thank you. Just that I support their uh security of that building, of that organisation and all their activities. And we can see that they're continuing to um offer activities and increase the activities as well. So I just support their continuing.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, Mayor. Um, just for councillors further um detail, it uh is located on a separate lot where they're uh locally known as the Green Shed, their, their community centre. Uh, so there was um previously historically a boundary realignment with, with regards to lots there, uh one being freehold and where, where the Green Shed is located. And um there are other assets on, on the council lot. So um because that precincting area within the beautiful township of Marburg is uh um very well activated by that community organisation and put to best community use uh in my personal opinion. Um, this is right and proper that we uh um do this.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to fifteen point four, which is the lease for renewal of a freehold land for the Rosewood Community Centre at nineteen School Street, uh, Rosewood. And again, we're looking at doing, entering into a lease with the Rosewood and District Support Centre Incorporated. Does anyone have any questions for the relevant council officer? No? In that case, I will move recommendations A, B and C. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Kunsman. Um, again, I'll just speak to the fact that the um Rosewood and District uh Support Centre do great work at the community centre. I know the community out there is growing and it is on the books for council to look at building a new community centre in the, in the future. Certainly in our long-term financial forecast, but it's great to see um this being used so um, so much in our community. Councillor Kunsman as a second, do you wish to speak to it?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, once again, the issue is of security for the organisation and all of the good works that they do. And um I support this.
Thank you. Councillor Island?
Um, Mayor, I'd just like to say that they also do a great job in Division One. Last year, they started coming out to Granchester once a, a week or once a month. And um it's greatly appreciated by our residents out in the country.
Thank you councillor Island. Any other discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Rosewood and District um Support um Centre Incorporated uh providing absolutely outstanding services to the uh communities in the western sector of the city. As detailed by councillor Island, they have moved towards a um, a model where they extend into the other townships uh within the area, Marburg and uh Granchester and uh also Walloon. And the, the support that they provide to the community in that area uh i- is outstanding. The, the community would not be able to um have the same resilience and function as they have, particularly um when, when times get tough. So the emergency relief in particular that uh that organisation has provided for decades now is um, is very, uh, the community is very reliant on um to, to keep it going. So in terms of um this instrument for uh the, the lease, then um that gives some security. Ipswich City Council has always supported all our community centres uh across the centre city uh very well. Uh, right across the other divisions. I'm, I'm very aware that even in the eastern suburbs and, and um in, around the CBD area, that um those services, uh as we have seen with the recent Australia Day Awards, that uh the recipients there were very um properly um receiving of, of those, those awards. So um I have nothing further to say other than I hope uh my colleagues support this.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Move on to item fourteen point six, which is the procurement, uh procurement matter, disposal of valuable non-current asset leases, seven Bruce Lane Camira and three eight nine Logan Road, Springfield. So this is a report concerning the procurement and the recommendation of proposed new leases of the following facilities between Ipswich City Council and um the Camira Friends and Neighbours Club, as well as Westside Community Care for the facilities at Langley Park Hall and the Camira Springfield Community Centre. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officers any questions on this matter? No? In that case, I will remove recommendations A through to C. Do I have a second for that, councillor John? Thank you. In discussing this, I appreciate the um open way that the organisation has um worked with these organisations. I also think both Camira Friends and Neighbourhood Club and Neighbours Club, as well as Westside Community Care, they do a lot of work for our, our residents. And in particular, things are very tough. Um, uh, cost of living is a real issue in our community and they've really been stepping up and doing even more work within our community as our community grows. So it's great to see that they're um, have their leases continued as well. Councillor John, as a second, do you wish to speak to the matter?
Um, I just, I guess to reiterate what you've said in relation to the um, the tenders that have been recommended today, they are already doing really great work in the community. Um, and they um have come up on the top of the list as the preferred recommended tenders after this um uh open community process as well. So I think that's an achievement in itself. So congratulations to um the Camira Friends and Neighbours Club and Westside Community Centre.
Thank you. Open up for any other discussion, councillor Tully?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'm certainly uh quite supportive of this. Both of these organisations uh predate the um uh area of Camira and Springfield coming into the city of Ipswich when it was part of the uh Mordenshire Council. And I know uh in particular, the um Camira um Friends and Neighbours have regular meetings and it really is a focal point uh for the community. And it is good to see that they have uh, the recommendation is that they've been successful um in having their uh lease extended and in a different fashion, but a very um um important community organisation. The uh Westside Community Centre, just further down the road basically, has been playing a vital role for many, many years. And I'm supportive of both organisations and I'm pleased that the uh officers on the uh committee that was established to consider all the proposals and tenders have recommended each one of those. Uh, it is very, very good to see uh these community groups, the continuation of their involvement in both centres um will occur. Uh, just one technical point, Mayor, the uh, it talks about Logan Road uh Springfield in relation to the uh Westside Community Centre. That road which runs from uh Gales from near the highway uh right out to uh Springfield is old Logan Road. Could I just ask that uh that be amended in the recommendation, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, it's mentioned a couple of times in the, in the um report. Yep. Thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you. I'll um put that matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We're going on to item fifteen, which is the reception in consideration of community reports. The first one is item fifteen point one, which is the report of the Special Ipswich Central redevelopment committee. Thank you. So this is a report um that council adopted, the report of the Special um Ipswich, um Ipswich Central redevelopment committee. That happened on Tuesday um with a recommendation as part of that for four new leases in the Nicholas Street precinct. Um, would anyone like to speak to a relevant council officer about these four leases? No? Okay. In that case, I will move uh recommendations in that report. Pardon me. Actually, I'll go, if I'll just backtrack. I'll be chair of that committee. Uh, how would you like this report managed?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I propose that we deal with um all matters.
Yes, all matters. Okay. So you'll move all that report? Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Kunsman. I'll go into this-
Sorry, Mayor, just, sorry. I just don't want to lose the opportunity just to remind councillors that um if they do have questions, we can go into closed session.
Yes.
Just noting, um, many of the councillors here today weren't, um, I guess, part of the, the committee, the special committee where we went and um to great lengths to discuss various aspects of each individual lease proposal. So-
I, I note that when we did go into closed session on Tuesday, that councillor Island, councillor John were, were there.
Hmm.
And I think, and certainly councillor Tully, I think, wasn't, wasn't there um to, to observe and ask questions. Um, but I guess if there are any questions in particular on, on the lease and terms, we will have to go into closed due to the confidential nature. So I just, I'll, I'll be guided by the group.
I've got more of a financial question that I didn't um have the opportunity or thought process to actually answer.
I will, I will move that we go into closed session.
Apologies for that.
That's not a problem. So I'll move then in accordance with section two five four J three G, that negotiates relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public discussion would be likely to prejudice the interests of the local government of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve, that the many move into closed session to discuss item fifteen point one of today's meeting. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. House, let me know that we're, we're enclosed. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Uh, welcome back to the um ordinary council meeting for the twenty fifth of January. We're at item fifteen point one. We've just come out of closed session to consider some confidential um aspects. Uh, at the moment, the motion has been moved by councillor Dole and seconded by councillor Kunsman. Um, councillor Dole is the mover. Do you wish to make any comment on report fifteen point one?
Um, but thank you, Mayor. Just um as Chair and um this being, I guess, our um last um ordinary meeting for this term, um and the last batch of leases to come through, um four in total. Um, I'm delighted to see um as part of this last suite of, of leases that we have two new ones for, for venue, um which is um a critical and important part um within our Nicholas Street redevelopment, attracting the right tenants and having the right mix there um to create that, that entertainment, um food and, and leisure hub um is critical to our success. So delighted we've secured the two brands. You know, we, we are attracting brands we have never attracted to Ipswich before. And, and um any of, of us that, that travel around on, on holidays with young families, we see these brands, you know, North Coast, um Brisbane. Um, to finally see um those brands wanting to call Ipswich home um shows one big important thing, that confidence is returning in our market. So I'm delighted.
Thank you councillor. Uh, councillor Kunsman as the second, do you wish to comment?
Thank you, Chair. Um, as usual, councillor Dole has said what I was going to say. Um, but I'm, I'm glad to see this uh increase in diversity and I'm extremely optimistic about the future of this project. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kunsman. Um, I know we can't talk in detail about some of the wonderful businesses that we have coming to the Nicholas Street precinct. Um, because we also have some, some um uh leases that we approved last year as well that are in, being negotiated. So we are bound by the commercial and confidence agreements, but I can say that the new leasing strategy council has adopted is really paying off. Uh, we have promised the Ipswich community a reinvigorated city heart and we continue to see a variety of businesses across key industry groups wanting to be part of what we are creating here. As the visitation numbers continue to grow, we want to make sure we are offering our community a city heart that is a place where people can go. They can catch up, be entertained, grab a feed, come together. grab a feed, come together with family and friends, and that is what these new businesses will provide. And anyone else would like to make a comment? I put the matter to the vote. Oh, sorry, councillor Doyle.
If I may, just one final comment, and that is to thank the Nicholas Street precinct staff. Within that team, the capacity is just amazing, combined decades, years of experience in the management of institutional-grade assets, shopping centre, leasing, legal governance, you name it. That is an amazing team, and we are in good hands, so thank you to the team.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We'll just wait for councillor Fettner and councillor Manson to come back. Thank you very much. Welcome back. We're now up to item sixteen, which is the officers' reports. And sixteen point one is the CEO organisational performance report for November and December twenty twenty-three. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer? No, in that case, I will move recommendations A through to C. Sorry, my apologies. Recommendation here that the CEO's organisational performance report for the month of November, December twenty twenty-three should be received, and the contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. In speaking to this, it's great to see that council can now start work on colleges costing restoration with the five point five million dollar contract now having been executed. I'm sure that residents who regularly use this reserve to fish, walk, picnic and spend time with their family and friends will be pleased to see the reserve being rehabilitated with a more resilient design. I know it has taken more time because we have consulted with the community, but it does mean that it's a lower cost option and something that will be more resilient because we know that area there will flood again. I also note another successful Christmas in Ipswich with more than eighty thousand people estimated to have attended a diverse range of twenty twenty-three Christmas in Ipswich events and New Year's Eve festivities across the city. There's also a twenty percent increase in entrance in the annual City of Ipswich Christmas lights competition, showing that people are invested in coming together and celebrating Christmas. This council is continuing to provide information to residents about how their money is being spent in the CBD redevelopment with the new Heart Check, the facts about the Nicholas Street precinct development site, which lists the history and the current work taking place in Nicholas Street precinct. And it's really important and a really important function of council to be open and transparent with residents, to tell them what is happening here and how their money is being spent. So it's a great site if you go to Shape Your Ipswich and go to Heart Check to get the facts. I also look forward to the community engagement that's going to be happening for the Ripley Road and Fisher Road upgrades. And again, if you go to Shape Your Ipswich, that is live now for people to have access to see the proposed works happening there as well. I'll open it up for any other discussion. No? Thank you, CEO, for that report. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. The next item is sixteen point two, the review of the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Policy Directive. And that particular, this particular report has three recommendations, that council note the review and the progress of that directive, that council note the outputs and outcomes achieved after three years of implementation, and council note the implementation directive will continue with a range of actions with clear accountability to pursue the achievement of the principles of that directive. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this matter? No? In that case, I move recommendations A, B and C. Do I have a second? Councillor Doyle, thank you. In speaking to this, one of the biggest issues facing the city when this council was elected to office was the amount of waste being dumped in Ipswich landfills, driven by the construction industry and the growth of throwaway consumables. There's certainly a place for the waste industry in Ipswich for operators who do the right thing, and we all do produce waste, and it's everybody's responsibility to find a better way to deal with it. When this directive was adopted, Queensland was producing about eleven million tonnes of waste, and around forty-two percent of all Queensland's waste was disposed of in private landfills right here in Ipswich. With some of the state's largest landfills, along with state government targets set to reduce household waste by twenty-five percent and increase recycling rates by seventy-five percent, we knew that we had to do everything we could to lead the approach to managing and influencing systemic change across waste, resource recovery, recycling and the circular economy to achieve better outcomes for our community. The implementation of the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Policy Directive is addressing the waste challenge and providing opportunities faced by the city. Progress in the implementation of the directive has been reported regularly to the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee, and I'm pleased to see the positive progress that this has been made on, only three years on, with this ten-year plan. We also know that we still have a lot of work to do to improve the waste issues that continue to plague our city. Achievements have been made on each of the ten principles of the directive, including the establishment of a joint Ipswich Waste and Circular Economy Task Force, a resource recovery strategy, an implementation plan, an illegal dumping and litter prevention strategy, while successfully defending appeals by waste industry companies to create additional and expanded waste landfills, to name a few. As we move forward through the next seven years of the directive, council will continue to advocate to the Queensland government to expedite the introduction of legislation to compel waste operators to enclose or invest all the composting of their organic waste. There are eleven future actions set out that ensure that we are reviewing our progress and ensuring we are heading in the right direction as we support the waste industry to strive for best practice. The directive sets out the direction for continued proactive compliance programmes with waste industry operators, and a focus on waste issues and opportunities to use resources, recovery and waste management and disposal contracts to benefit the city. We are the first council in recent memory to take waste issues faced by our community seriously, and we'll keep fighting for a cleaner and greener Ipswich. I open it up for other discussion.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight, you know, some of the themes that were brought out in your words, that waste was one of the biggest problems, and we decided to reframe that problem as a new council, you know, considering the threats and opportunities to our city. You know, the threats being, you know, the environmental hazards that have been created by waste operators over many years, and the impact that that's had on our residents and continues to have. But the opportunity for us to be and forge ahead to a more sustainable Ipswich by managing our own waste appropriately and planning appropriately for the future. This council has been calculated and united in its approach from day one. We set the stage for a legal stoush not seen in the history of Ipswich, indeed the state. The Land Tract Clean Away and Austin BMI lawsuit, which we got favourable outcomes for, may I add. But that cost the city millions of dollars, but we had to put our money where our mouth was, and that's where the strategy was set in stone, and we were on a path to find better ways of doing things in our city. It was pretty ambitious, this directive with many moving parts, often outside the sphere of control of local government. But we did what we could, and we've done a pretty bloody good job. While we have been methodically pulling levers and developing policy and targeting our advocacy towards the state, our community continues to fight alongside us with their own advocacy efforts. We've actually seen those advocacy efforts not only ramp up but mature and become more persistent. And that's been an important piece of the puzzle too, standing alongside of our community. You mentioned the task force with the state government, you know, that's a wonderful in that we have directly to the department to canvas what's really happening here in our city, directly to an audience of state government employees. We've advocated when it comes to the change in government legislation. We have been consistently, and it's taken a lot of the organisation's time, to actually take the time to make submissions to reviews that have happened over time, including the Queensland Organic Strategy and Action Plan, the E-Products Action Plan and the Environmental Protection Act. These things take time, but we've taken the time to make submissions on behalf of council, but on behalf of our residents as well. We also refused that application by Oneless to include landfill and its new proposed resource recovery application. This was a huge win for us. And on council managing its own waste, we have a very, very successful resource recovery strategy that we adopted and subsequently adopted the implementation plan that sits alongside it, which is very detailed and maps out what's happening here and how our city manages its own waste over the next ten years. But the best part, I think, about all of this is representing our community, but also being on the journey with them, because there was a lot of repairing in the relationship that we had to do with our residents when we were elected. And we've put significant effort in to rebuild that trust. We've done that by telling them the truth. We've done that by delivering information to them in a timely manner, and it's actually helped them on their advocacy. And I think that is one of the strongest outcomes that I never conceived of when we initially undertook this programme of works. And that was seeing the community turn around and actually trust that we're doing the right thing by them on this really important issue for them. It's not lost on me that this has been a huge undertaking by the organisation, pulling significant resources and occupying countless hours. To you, CEO, and Brett Davy and the team, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fettner. Councillor Doyle?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it brief. Yourself and Andrew have well and truly thoroughly covered our achievements. I just want to take the opportunity to call out my colleagues, fellow councillors and yourself, Mayor, when I think back to those first few months in council and the hours we spent discussing what this strategy would look like. And we had the idea of bringing in strategic advisers to, you know, nut out the way forward. And it has been, I guess, our Bible, our code, and all councillors have been, you know, using the tools within the Waste Directive. So I guess when we think about a legacy from this term, I think it's something that we all can be proud of.
Thank you. And I do know when I go back through the rest, I think councillor Doyle, you were the person that actually moved this motion originally back in December twenty twenty, and I acknowledge all the work that you put in as Deputy Mayor back then, and all the work that you, in the leadership that you showed in this particular directive.
Thanks, Mayor.
I'll open it for other discussion. In that case, I put this matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I note that it's nine fifty-nine, and the next matter is quite a large matter, so I'll move that. We'll have an adjournment to ten thirty. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. I'll see you back here at ten thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back to the Ordinary Council meeting for the 25th of January 2024. We're now up to item sixteen point three, but before that, I'd just like to make a clarification on a previous matter. If I could ask Mr. Davy to come up to the lectern, just referring to item. Fourteen point two, the interim local law. I made comment about are we going to put flyers and winds, you know, on people's wind screens and things like that. Would you mind providing an update?
Yeah, of course. Brett Davy, General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services. So after the discussion earlier, I was provided with some information from the Waste Reduction and Recycling Act, which has included the placement of flyers under windscreen wipers as littering, unless for certain exceptions. So that's just something to note. So we'll focus on the core flutes and working with the PCYC and the school in terms of making sure they're aware of the parking changes.
Thank you, Mr. Davy. Appreciate that.
Clarification. Where does that apply? Does that apply on private property or on public roads? Because at the moment, it's not a public road, which is the very essence of what we were talking about, the need for the off-street parking area. Like, you go to a shop, the example I give, you go to a shopping centre, private property, you get flyers there all the time.
Yeah, and that's an offence. So I don't think it's restricted to the tenure. I think it's restricted to the way the, well, the way legislation is worded is the offence is placing a document on a motor vehicle. And the exceptions are things like writing your details if you've ran into that motor vehicle.
So we could give them a parking ticket and put it there, but you couldn't tell them that we're going to give them parking tickets next week?
Hmm. Yeah.
That, yes, that is interesting. You put a, you put a parking ticket up the windshield.
So, so we can have a look at the.
That's an interesting law, that one.
Yeah, we'll have a look at the exceptions, but we'll focus on things that are consistent with legislation, of course.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davy, for that clarification. We're now moving to item sixteen point three, which is the new Ipswich Planning Scheme Draft Stage Three Public Consultation Report. May I ask for the Royal Council Office to come back to the lectern, please?
Brett Davy, General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services.
Thank you, Mr. Davy. The decision that council are making today, how will that be communicated with residents? Is there a comms plan or what's, what's the process?
Yes, we haven't got a comms plan together just yet, but in terms of actions from here, there are statutory actions that are required to be achieved for legislation. There's non-statutory. So from the statutory perspective, we'd issue the, if we were successful, of course, today, we'd issue the draft of the planning scheme to the state government for their review, and then we'd make contact with the submitters. So all the submitters and the properties listed in the FAR, the Feasible Alternative Assessment Report. So those, those are statutory steps. The non-statutory steps are obviously how we communicate these steps to the community at large and the industry. So we can work on a plan of when we'll execute those steps, noting that the planning scheme itself is currently confidential and timing of messaging of the outcome of a submission and the availability of the information will be important, too.
Okay. So if this is approved today, it goes to the state. How long will that, will that take?
It probably takes two to three months. It really depends on what they've got on at the time and when we complete the last of the statutory steps, which will essentially be the notifications.
So the parts that are still confidential now, when will they not be confidential anymore so the residents can see it?
When we get the sign-off from the state, essentially. We could also talk to the state about if there is an approach we could take to get things out earlier without necessarily completing the statutory steps. The balance there is confusion because we've got a version out now, we could come out with another version at some point, and then if there are further changes, you'd have a third version, and that could all be in the space of six months.
Okay. Okay. I guess I'm looking at the fact that within any place there's some sensitivities. And what were the main sensitivities as part of that community consultation?
I think the, the core one was flooding, which is an obvious one, and that's the the presence of new flood mapping and new analysis, and that is also the effect of better mapping of overland flow, creeks and stormwater flow. So that's quite scary for some, and there are now better sources of data for where there's dangerous flow paths. So that's in the scheme, too. So that was probably the number one submission. And then we had a range of submissions on things like the retail hierarchy, so the size and location and scale of shopping centres. There were a range of issues about some of our code drafting, and some of those were coming from the development industry in terms of the way that our subdivision codes are drafted. That's a bit of a selection of the top ones.
I know I attended many of the, the public consultation sessions. There was a belief that a change in the zoning here would impact people's insurance prices. Do you mind going into some detail explaining how insurance company, how that, how that occurs?
Yes, of course. So insurance companies rely on a range of data to make their decisions on flood risk and certainly following the 2011 events, they've undertaken some significant flood modelling across Queensland and Australia, to be honest. So they're relying upon data, which is, in some cases, more advanced than the data that we have, but they don't rely on ours to make insurance decisions. So unfortunately, the, the outcome of the flood modelling from the Flood Commission of Inquiry and the combined flood modelling that occurred as a result of that has been publicly accessible for quite some time. The insurance companies have also had access to that data. So that's the same data we're relying on for our modelling, at least in part.
Okay, so it's not so much the planning scheme, it's the fact that we're both using the same data source, the insurance companies and council.
Yeah, yes. And of course, there are big implications on insurance when a natural disaster occurs. So they invest heavily in understanding natural disasters to make insurance decisions independently.
Thank you. Are there any other questions to Mr. Davy? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll move recommendations A through to F. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Feknam. I'm moving this, I'd like to say that this draft, Ipswich Plan 2024, is essential to how our city will manage our growth and the development into the future. Taking this step today, taking this step today to progress, this version of the planning scheme marks significant progress towards the adoption of a desperately needed new planning scheme. The current planning scheme for Ipswich was prepared under the Integrated Planning Act of 1997, which took effect in 2006. At that time, Ipswich had a population of around 130,000 people. Ipswich's current population is more than 250,000 people, and we are set to become home to more than 535,000 residents by 2046, as we continue to be the fastest-growing city in the state, and I think the sixth fastest in Australia. In 2018, council resolved to prepare a new planning scheme, and over the past six years, this draft Ipswich Plan 2024 was prepared with the best practice planning principles. We've engaged with the community and stakeholders at each step of the way, and after a state interest review, we can now submit this plan for ministerial review and approval, and we hope to be able to endorse the new Ipswich Plan 2024 later this year. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the way council has communicated with those most impacted by this plan, the people of Ipswich. Everyone who wants to live or conduct business in Ipswich will be guided by this plan, and council has done absolutely everything to ensure that residents and stakeholders have been consulted. Last year, council was awarded the Planning Institute of Australia Queensland Award for Excellence in the Stakeholder Engagement category for the new Ipswich Planning Scheme, Ipswich Plan 2024. Council was also the winner of the overall award for excellence for stakeholder engagement for the new planning scheme, which will now also be entered into for the 2024 National Planning Institute of Australia Award for Excellence. And I'm very proud of the, the work that the, the team have done to achieve, to get that consultation from residents and to achieve those results. By talking with residents, we were able to see some patterns around their feedback that centred around things like flooding, lot sizes and zoning. Council identified and made changes to the plan in response to submissions to ensure this plan is fit for purpose for the Ipswich community. This is a huge body of work prepared over many years, and I would urge residents to head to the Shopee Ipswich page to stay up to date with many aspects of the Ipswich Plan 2024, to see any updates as they occur. I'll now open up for any other, so I think Council Feknam, you're the second one. Do you wish to make any comments?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to also highlight the work around the engagement piece that we undertook to inform our residents, you know, what a planning scheme actually is. I think that our communications took it back to basics to highlight to the community what exactly a planning scheme is and how that might affect them. And, you know, as you stated, we won awards for that, and I think that making the scheme more accessible has been, you know, one of the exciting, most exciting parts of this for me, to have, you know, a digital scheme that you're able to easily, you know, glean information from that's important to you at a property level is a must-have in 2024. So I think, you know, that work shouldn't be understated. I mean, you know, trawling through, you know, thousands of documents to find the information that you need was never an easy task for the everyday person to become more involved. So I see this as an evolution to actually keep residents more closely, you know, connected to the planning scheme and future amendments that they might envisage as well. And I note that this is a living and breathing document, you know, and we've promised the community that it will maintain, you know, that status as a living and breathing document. So if there are things that need to be changed, if there are policies that need to be implemented, that work can be programmed, and I'm sure councillor Doyle will speak to us. Some, some of the foreshadowing that has already occurred in our planning scheme discussions. I also want to thank the officers for taking particular care around very sensitive issues for some of the residents in Division Three, going the extra mile to actually have those conversations, to explain what the changes to the scheme mean, and actually incorporate their feedback into the new draft. You know, that's been a really great outcome and one where our residents have felt very cared for, and, and they felt heard. So, you know, I commend the work across, you know, the scheme, many years, lots of hard work, and councillors have put in the hard work as well, turning up to the fortnightly planning scheme meetings to talk about some of these challenges, to understand how we can make, you know, improvements to the scheme to better reflect the aspirations of our community.
Thank you, Council Feknam.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would just like to speak specifically, I guess, to the heritage and, and character issues that have been addressed within our new planning scheme. As we inch closer to putting in place that, that new scheme, I look forward to the increased, I guess, protections level of protection for our heritage properties, and, and that is through the combined, I guess, character overlay and, and character zones in combination with the, the new Schedule Seven list of properties we've, we've seen under the, the old, very old outdated scheme, Schedule Two and Schedule Three. They are a bit outdated and, and they weren't good outcomes for a couple of those properties. So absolutely delighted. We are edging closer to a greater level of protection for our local heritage. It won't go far enough, though. As Andrew has alluded to, there will be an amendment potentially required. I am advocating hard, as everyone knows, for an updated heritage study. The one we had done in the nineties is just too old, and we need to turn our mind to, you know, what period of, of time we want to afford protection to. I know councillor Madsen is a great fan of particular architecture, I think, from the fifties and, and sixties. So there's lots of important examples of that within Ipswich. So that is an important piece of work, and I know staff already have wheels in motion to get that underway. The other piece of the puzzle, I guess, which unfortunately here at council, local governments have very limited powers to issue notices of, of repair. Those powers will need to come from the state. Again, that piece of work has already commenced by the Queensland Heritage Advisory Panel through, you know, the Queensland Heritage Council. There has been funding from the state government to implement all the recommendations, and one is to afford greater powers to local governments, give them some levers to issue those important repair orders. Demolition by neglect is the biggest threat to our heritage in Queensland, in Australia for that matter. So by my appointment to the Queensland Heritage Council, I will continue that advocacy, but, but happy in relation to our, our planning scheme where we've landed. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Also, councillor Tillingham, you would have been here with the 2006 planning scheme. I guess the, the tools and the maps are a bit different now that, that are available?
Yeah, I will say a few words. Of course, the having a plan, a planning scheme under the Integrated Planning Act meant that it was easier to make amendments rather than to bring in a fresh scheme. And our offices consistently advised that as issues arose, either from the community or through councillors or through officers themselves with issues, that we made many, many amendments to the planning scheme over those years, but a, a new planning scheme. But a new planning scheme in a new era is to be welcomed for the people of Ipswich. I just want to touch on one thing and we've mentioned the flooding and the insurance companies that you had mentioned. I met a person only this week whose insurance, he and the wife have got a fairly large block, which wasn't even flooded in 1974, but part of the block was. And their insurance premium had risen just very recently from 6,000 to 14,000. Now, he says, and most people in the community say it and believe it, that insurance companies are using postcodes or in some cases maybe suburbs to assess the risk of flooding. And that's what insurers are about, the risk and the appropriate costs that are made. But this person's front yard, which is some acres, was flooded in the past, but the house was never flooded. And he was able to negotiate through another company, a figure of about $7,000 for the insurance. But it is an absolute scandal that insurance companies are using planning schemes or suburbs or postcodes to create their fees each year for the premiums that they're charging. And I say, the community needs to stand up and the federal government needs to act, which they have done. They insisted on a common definition of flooding because there were all sorts of issues, as councillors would be aware, following the 2022 flood and the floods in New South Wales in particular. What was a flood? Was it riverine flooding? Was it creek flooding? Was it, you know, overland flow flooding? So there's a common definition, but a more serious issue in my view is the legality and professionalism of insurance companies using criteria which are not applicable or relevant to individual properties. And I say to the federal government, it's time to act.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other discussion? Well, thank you to the team and I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item 16.4, which is the proposed policies for resource recovery. We're looking at adopting two policies. One is a community service obligation policy, as well as a competitive neutrality policy in the resource recovery area. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer? Yes, thank you. May I have the relevant council officer come to the lectern, please?
Mayor, councillors, Kay Cavanagh, general manager, environment sustainability.
Thank you, councillor Tully.
I've just got one issue. I think it's pretty simple, but you might be able to clarify this for me, what it means and is it appropriate? It's under the first proposed policy, you know, in relation to exemptions, the fee exemptions. And it's paragraph 5.7, management of waste generated as a direct result from natural disasters or emergencies. And in paragraph Roman numeral one, it, in the third line, it talks about waste generated by declared natural disasters or emergency situations. Now, I know there was some talk on email recently about the storm that came through on the 16th of December last year, whether or not it was declared. In the past, I know we've made a decision on a case by case, you know, in cases where it's not declared presumably by the state. Is my interpretation of that correct, that it's something that's declared by the state? Because often they won't declare something that could be serious in one particular council area.
That's true. So an actual declaration is declared by the state as a disaster. So the terminology there would refer to that. However, there is provisions that we would be able to make a determination for a localised event that we would consider to be significant. So like a severe storm that we've seen previously, even just before Christmas, where we could elect to then have like green waste disposal, for example.
Thank you. If you're referring to that general exemption under 5.8, which is the next paragraph, it talks about the ability to do that, to authorise, to approve a waste disposal exemption to any entity or organisation deemed to provide a general benefit to the community. I do think that probably under 5.7, we want to make it clear that we do have the power, where we're not dependent upon the state. So to declare it, because you could have multiple suburbs affected and we adopt this policy. And as I say, I don't think 5.8 is worded sufficiently to give the general exemption. What I was going to suggest as an amendment in 5.7 at the end, where it reads generated by declared natural disasters or emergency situations, to add the words, or other circumstances approved by council, which could be under delegation, of course. So I think you've clarified for me what it is. My concern still is that it just might hold us in a bit of a tight situation in terms of the strict application of the policy. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tully. So the recommendation is that we have a look at some further clarification in there or? Or you'll propose an amendment?
Just checking. Any other questions of Ms Cavanagh? Thank you. I feel you're going to say something, because I know this is the question I asked, I think, just looking back through the emails, councillor Tully. I asked a couple of weeks ago about this.
I would just add that I think the amendment that councillor Tully has suggested is fine. It would certainly make it clearer, but my understanding is that the declaration relates to the natural disasters. And what Ms Cavanagh was intending to mean was that emergency situations can be declared by council, determined by council, if I've got that right. So, but if you'd like to make it clearer, that's okay.
I'd be happy to. That's why I raised it.
Yeah, it's whether the word declared covers the disasters and the situation. So I will propose a much shorter amendment, which will achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. In that case, I will move recommendations A and B. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Tully. I'll open up for discussion, but if you've got an amendment proposed?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the word declared and often occurs when you're reading documents, legislation, regulations, where you wonder whether a word occurring before two things covers both things. I was, as a result of the CEO's comment, I was going to suggest we put the word other after emergency situations. But again, you're back to the same thing, whether or not it's generated by a declared natural disaster. So I will move an amendment to add the words at the end of paragraph Roman numeral one, the words or other circumstances approved by council. So that would read generated by declared natural disasters or emergency situations and to add or other circumstances approved by council.
And as the mover of this, I'm happy to accept that. Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Tully?
Thank you, Chair. In the paragraph just above 5.7, in the last line, could it be changed to at sites where a suitable bin location cannot be agreed, an infirm service will not be offered? We've got and inform. Could we just change that to an infirm?
Can I just say that? So the paragraph before, above 5.7, so last paragraph of 5.6?
The last line.
Council, it says, council will order infirm service recipients to verify their eligibility as required. Notably, Ipswich Waste Service can only provide this service following a site to safety inspection. At sites where a suitable bin location cannot be agreed, and informed services will be offered.
And infirm.
Yes, thank you. And infirm. So that's that paragraph. Thank you. So it's only councillor Tully, you pick up on that?
Sorry, apologies.
I'm happy to accept that.
I'm happy to accept that as well.
Infirm service. Perhaps capitalise it.
Perhaps capitalise it as well, I'd say, yeah, if that's okay. Yes, councillor Tully.
Can I just clarify? And I do have a few words to say. Are we moving A and B together?
I was going to, I'm happy to split them.
Oh, no, no, I'm happy.
That is, that is what, that is the law, not should A, B together.
Be told we're not.
Yeah, so you can, you have comments.
Just briefly on B, which relates to competitive neutrality policy. That does make sense and those concepts have been around for a long time in councils and government organisations around Australia for a long time, so that there's no net advantage to a government type organisation or entity over the private sector. And I think most people would accept that. In relation to paragraph A, which is the community service obligation policy, I'm really happy that it's all cascaded into one policy. But I still think there's many people in the community, organisations and individuals who may not be aware of the areas in which we can provide fee exemptions. Now, we just touched on one in relation to the natural disasters. But I'll just be very brief. But there are eight exemptions proposed. In one way or another, we're able to provide those at the moment. One is for charitable and non-profit organisations with their operations in Ipswich. Special community cleanup events such as Cleanup Australia Day. Provision of waste and recycling services at Ipswich Community Events. Provision of co-mingled recycling programmes for schools in our city. Provision of additional bin capacity for residents with special medical conditions requiring additional volume for curbside waste disposal. And the assisted household waste removal, the infirm service, which is very much appreciated by those people who are receiving that if they have no one else who can take their bins out onto the footpath. And of course, 5.7 refers to the natural disasters and emergencies. And now with the amendment, other circumstances where it's sufficient for it to be declared within our city or, I won't use the word declared, but identified within Ipswich rather than a state declaration. And finally, the general exemption in 5.8, the eighth provision, I think that's excellent. So that there will be circumstances which are sometimes very hard to envisage when you're putting together a policy. And that gives us the opportunity of extending and applying that community service obligation for a fee exemption or reduction. So I'm very happy that this is before us today and it has my full support.
Thank you, councillor Tully. I'm also very passionate about good governance. It's always pleasing to see a framework put in place that, so we can be consistent. So as a council, we can be accountable and have transparency in our decision making. I think this policy provides clear guidelines to when a council can provide community assistance and clarity around emergency and disaster management, ensuring that we can make swift decisions. Because it's sort of not in the process at the moment. So I want to mention the addition of the many charity exemptions that are now in place for those not-for-profit organisations who really are helping the most vulnerable residents. Councillor Tully?
Thanks, Mayor. And through you to councillor Tully, I believe 5.1 is actually an addition, a service that's not currently offered, but one that is certainly welcomed by lots of community groups out in Division Three. And not least, the men shed at Bundamba who have been advocating very hard for a policy position around this, to continue the good work that they do there. So I'm very supportive of this new policy and the inclusion of those charitable organisations to access the fee exemption for the work that they do, the very important work that they do for our community. I note that Logan spends about 50K a year providing that service to charitable and non-for-profit organisations. So I'm keen to kind of monitor that to see if we need to make any tweaks, say, in the next 12 months.
Thank you, councillor Tully. If there's no other comment, I will then move A and B, sorry, I'll then put A and B to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. 16.5 is the proposed disaster awareness camera network policy. And it's come to council that council adopt the disaster awareness camera network policy as outlined in attachment one. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? No? In that case, I will move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. Deputy Mayor? Appreciate that. This council is committed to making sure that we can provide the community with the best possible technology and processes to keep them safe during a disaster. After the 2022 floods, both in March and in May, we asked the community for a range of feedback that formed the flood review in 2022. The community told us that they would benefit greatly from a real-time camera network to provide situational awareness on emerging disasters. And so we implemented a temporary camera network. Once we secure funding, plans are in place for a staged rollout of a permanent network, firstly at the referable dams and later replacing temporary cameras throughout this year. This new policy takes into account privacy considerations and the establishment of internal controls. What we have now is a disaster awareness camera network policy that provides for a solid foundation for situational awareness in the event of a disaster that effectively balances the privacy of our community. And I think having that snapshot just, I think, every 15 minutes is a great way for our community to have relevant and timely and private, timely information without infringing on people's privacy. I'll open up for other discussion as a second, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that these, the trial cameras have been absolutely well and truly received well by our community. As you've stated, I won't go into the details that you've already covered. But the ability for that situational awareness within our community adds an extra layer for our residents to be able to remain safe in their own home and to be able to view those locations where they know that they may get cut off or if they had a planned travel route, that they can discover alternate routes to keep safe.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Tully?
Yeah, thank you very much for that. And I can speak directly in relation to the trial of the 11 cameras, specifically in Division Two and specifically at Goodna. There are four cameras at Goodna, one at the Goodna Boat Ramp and a very panoramic shot of the parking area, but also the river and the boat ramp, Brisbane Terrace at Goodna near the Goodna Aquatic Centre. And that is the last link for people on that western side of Goodna, being able to get to the eastern side and to escape the area if the flood waters are rising. And there's two other cameras in Mill Street at Goodna, one near Parker Street and one near Enid Street. People are certainly very appreciative of it. With the flood, quite interestingly, a couple of weeks ago, there was some minor indication of some floodwaters or waters rising, I guess is probably the better word. And I was able to actually snap a picture of the panoramic view of the Goodna Boat Ramp, which a lot of people probably have never been to. But it was a shot that just showed that the river really had risen only a few centimetres. So it really is an opportunity to evaluate the positioning of the cameras and the use of those cameras in the event of a flood. Or there's a suggestion here of other disasters, for example, fires, which, you know, could be in Pine Mountain or some other areas. So I'm certainly supportive of this. The privacy situation and the internal controls are important there in this policy. I do think that we should probably review this after a year, just to have a general review of this policy. I won't move an amendment that we do that, but I think it needs to be a dynamic document with changing circumstances. As was said in the 1974 flood, which was 50 years ago this weekend, and I remember it very, very clearly, no two floods are alike. Places that flooded even with a higher flood earlier and a lower flood later. And later on, some of those areas did flood and didn't flood. So no two floods are alike for that reason. But these cameras have been a great boost, particularly in the Goodna area, and very much welcomed, as I assume, not only in Division Two, but in all of the other suburbs where the temporary cameras have been installed.
Thank you, councillor Tully. I also like the fact that on the disaster dashboard, we've also incorporated the TMR cameras as well, alongside on the Warrigo Highway as well. So it's been quite good to have it all in one place as well. Any other comment? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item 16.6, which is the Flood Recovery Resilient Homes Fund, the voluntary home buyback. the voluntary home buyback, proposed property acquisition. And there were three recommendations there. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this matter? No? In that case, I'll move recommendations A, B and C. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, deputy mayor. Any discussion? Yes, thank you, councillor Tully.
Just very briefly, again, I know this relates to a particular property and I'll certainly be supporting that. But I make a general comment briefly that I've said before about this voluntary buyback. It's one of the great initiatives of the Commonwealth and state governments here in Queensland and, of course, in New South Wales as well. And it's been tremendous. It's taken people out of flood areas with some difficulty. Some people didn't want to do that. The buyback price was at the pre twenty-two, twenty twenty-two flood. So that people have been given buybacks and a reasonable compensation, I'll use that word, but a reasonable price for their land to be, house and land to become a park sort of area. I would say, I'll just repeat what I've said before, even though this buyback was widespread and of significant amounts, I would like to see the Commonwealth and state look at negotiating an ongoing buyback, even if it was only ten percent of the properties now, year by year, so that bit by bit we take homes out of flood areas across the city of Ipswich.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Yeah, this particular one's for a property in West Ipswich. But yeah, I think we concur with our, it was the day before the twenty twenty-two floods, the twenty-fourth of February, where we adopted the Ipswich Integrated Catchment Plan, which recommended for the first time buybacks. I met with Minister Murray Watt, the federal minister for emergency services, second half last year, and put for the, for us as a council, we would love to see this as a continued annual programme that really does address these issues that happen in our city. So he seemed to be open to it. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Item sixteen point seven is the surrender of drainage easements located at twenty-two Hume Drive, Bundamba. And the recommendation is that council declare the existing easement as listed in the report that is surplus to council requirements and grant consent to the surrender of these three easements. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this matter? In that case, I will move that recommendation. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Kunsman. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. The next item, sixteen point eight, is the proposal to acquire property at Peak Crossing within EnviroPlan levy funds. And there are four recommendations there for council to do that. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this matter? No? Okay, in that case, I will move recommendations A through to D. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, deputy mayor. In speaking to this, I'd like to say that each time our residents pay their rates, whether it's directly as a landowner or indirectly as a renter, a levy is included for the Ipswich EnviroPlan. Over the past twenty-three years, more than eleven point nine million dollars has been invested in purchasing five thousand nine hundred and forty-two hectares of land in Ipswich that are set aside for nature conservation. These purchases help us to protect and maintain vital ecosystems and natural environments. This acquisition will also increase the adjoining Flinders-Gulburn Conservation Estate by four per cent, which supports extensive forests and also cultural artefacts and sites. By adding these ninety-three hectares of significant conservation land at Peak Crossing, we are ensuring that significant and endangered species of flora and fauna found in this area will be protected. Deputy Mayor's a second, would you like to add anything?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just, you've very well detailed what this is about. But I just would like to reiterate that our community is absolutely proud of the history and the achievements of the Ipswich EnviroPlan.
Thank you. I think councillor Ireland.
Thank you, Chair. As I've said before, I have no problem with us buying land, but it is bought with the residents' money. And I have a Woolshed natural area that we buy and then lock up and the residents can't walk through it. So my argument is if it's residents' money, then it should be open to the public to walk through. The trails should be made and it should be used. So, you know, I've been waiting for four years for Woolshed to be finished. So I just wonder if they can't finish that, is this land just going to sit there? Because we'll have to go in and weed it and make sure there's no pests there. I'd just like a timeline on when the public might get to go in.
I think when we looked at that earlier, it was a matter of budget. I think the, we need to make sure, a future council needs to make sure that there's budget in there for Woolshed and for the trails and the work to be done. Would you like to ask a council officer a question on this? That's right. Yeah. Thank you, councillor Ireland. Any other comments?
Just through you, Chair, to councillor Ireland, I don't think those two things are necessarily mutually exclusive. I think that we can strike while the iron's hot. I mean, the property owners have made the advance to council, you know, to offer up the properties. So it kind of makes sense that we would be negotiating a position like this and absolutely look forward to, at the same time, next budget, investing some money in the Woolshed project as well and advocating for that through the budget process.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I'll move on to item sixteen point nine, which is a budget amendment for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I'd just like to highlight that an updated page to attachment one of item sixteen point nine titled Budget Amendment Amendment twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four was uploaded to the hub and also emailed to the councils yesterday. This page, this updated page reflects a change to the asset sustainability ratios, which were identified as being incorrect in the current agenda, referred to page, I think, nine hundred and four of the current agenda. A full updated attachment one for item sixteen point nine has also been uploaded for completeness. So because of this change, I need to move and second that. And I think councillor, you were the one that picked it up. Would you like to move that budget amendment? Thank you. A second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Thank you. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. Thank you. So now we'll go to item sixteen point nine with the actual budget amendment with that page revised. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions on the budget amendment? No? In that case, I will move that the proposed amended twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget and long-term financial forecast, including the proposed amended debt policy as detailed in attachment one, and as amended, if I could have that word, as amended, two, three and five be adopted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Fichtner. I'll open it up for comment and discussion. In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. May I move on to sixteen point ten, which is the monthly finance performance report for November twenty twenty-three? Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this report? No? In that case, I move that the report on the council's financial performance for the period ending thirtieth of November twenty twenty-three be considered and noted by council. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? Anyone, any concerns? Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Sixteen point eleven is the Queensland Audit Office twenty twenty-three final audit report. And this is a report concerning the Queensland Audit Office findings and recommendations from the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three external audit of Ipswich City Council. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this report? No? In that case, I'll move the recommendation as written. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? I think my only thing is, see, I just denote the continued improvement from Q I O, because I am very involved with our council. So thank you to the teams that work with them and think of a progressing, you know, matters that have been previously reported and making sure that things are addressed systemically. Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item sixteen point twelve, which is the Draft Inclusion and Connectedness Implementation Programme for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six. And this is a report concerning the Draft Inclusion Connectedness Implementation Programme for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six. It outlines the proposed approach to removing and reducing barriers experienced by people living with disabilities and encouraging and enabling full and meaningful participation in Ipswich. It's an action-based programme created collaboratively with community members and council to guide Ipswich in becoming more inclusive and connected city for people with disabilities. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this matter? If I may ask, for the relevant council officer?
Good morning. Melissa Dow, Community Services Manager.
Thank you, Ms Dow. Who did council partner with to write this plan?
Lots of people. We worked quite closely with Spinal Life. Spinal Life played the key role in helping with the consultation and the extensive engagement and also the drafting of the document.
Okay. And this will be a first for our council, I believe?
It'll be a second. I believe there was one that became obsolete in two thousand and eighteen. This is quite different in the responses. Been lots of changes in the disability services sector with the rollout of the NDIS a few years ago. So this is a very progressive and hands-on approach.
Thank you, Ms Dow. Are there any other questions to Ms Dow about the plan? Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the work in this. I'll move the recommendation. Do I have a second for that, councillor Kunsman? In speaking to this, everyone should be able to access services, feel included and be able to fully participate and contribute in our community. This programme recognises the need for a collaborative, responsive and flexible approach to building an inclusive and connected city. I want to acknowledge Spinal Life Australia and all the stakeholders that have worked with us to advocate for a better Ipswich. The community is at the heart of everything that we do and currently about six point six per cent of Ipswich residents are living with disabilities. Reducing barriers in our community enhances the lives of people with disabilities, their loved ones, their carers, and ultimately makes Ipswich a better place for all people to live, work and play. So I commend your team there, Ms Dow, on the great work and the collaborations within the community. Thank you. Councillor Kunsman, as the second, do you wish to speak to it?
Thank you, Chair. I support this programme wholeheartedly. Council has been able to turn its mind to a programme of inclusiveness that will be so valuable in our community. And this is an example of real leadership from the officers concerned and a programme for now and the future. And I note also that it's based in community consultation and I think that that's a really important part of acceptance for this and for its continuation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kunsman. I hope for any other discussion?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to also touch on the consultation piece that backs up this implementation programme. It was very significant. I'm going to add lots of people, not only across the organisation but across our community, having their say on this really important piece of work. The Inclusion and Connectedness Implementation Plan is something for us all to keep an eye on. It speaks to how the organisation is going to tackle problems in the future. And we think about the hard stuff always when it comes to footpaths and making, you know, our communities more accessible for those who can't get around, you know, as well as others. But I think that the success of this will be in the fact that we've looked at the soft stuff too. It's all of the inclusion. It's including all communities across our city to come together, whether that be through recreation, whether that be through city events programme. And I know that this will, you know, enable the organisation to think about, you know, inclusion before they undertake a particular project, whether it be a big infrastructure project, whether it be an event that we're planning, you know, in a department somewhere in council. I think that this really highlights the importance that we place on this. The state government came out in two thousand and twenty-two with their approach and it's very much in line with a human rights approach. And what we're doing here is quite progressive. And I'm really keen to see its active monitoring. I know that there's at least yearly monitoring when it comes to this. And I can't wait to see some of the successes that we've had in collaboration throughout the organisation by using this as a guiding document for inclusion. I'd also like to thank councillor Kunsman for her advocacy on this. I think she just gave all of the kudos to the council officers. But I know that since we adopted and worked on very closely together the community development strategy, councillor Kunsman has made this an express, you know, priority. And I think that this is a legacy that you'll leave for our council. Councillor Kunsman, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fichtner. I was just going through, during the election campaign in twenty twenty, Spinal Life actually approached all the candidates. I think most of us went to their information session. And one of the things they asked us was, would you support the creation of an access and inclusion plan commencing the first six weeks of being in? So it's, Spinal Life, not only did we produce one, but Spinal Life have been intricately, intimately involved with the creation of it. So it's a great community outcome.
And their success through the procurement process was based on the merits of the services that they provided. So it was very interesting to come full circle, you know, after almost four years that, you know, Spinal Life rewarded the contract to help us undertake that community engagement exercise. So, yeah, great advocacy on their behalf.
I think it's a clearly structured plan with six approaches and it'll be good to see those, all those implemented. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item sixteen point three, which is the Ipswich Children's Art Gallery Option.
Just seeking your thoughts, Chair, on councillor Madsen and my return to the meeting. If there's, if you have.
I was going to seek some advice because we're not making a decision, it's just looking at.
We've made the decision.
Sorry?
We've made the decision in the declaration. So I wasn't asking yet for us to debate that again. But whether there's going to be anything further after this item is considered in the agenda that you're planning on raising.
Yes, there is the late item of the proposed Ripley Road cataloguing pursuit agreement.
Of course, no worries. Thank you.
Which I'm sure councillor Madsen definitely wants to be for. Thank you. So the recommendation's here that council approve the pursuit of Australian Government, Queensland Government, corporate and philanthropic funding for a dedicated children's art gallery on level one of the venue building in the Nicholas Street precinct. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this matter? I think councillor Johnny, you do?
Yes, please.
Yep.
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Ben Poll, General Manager, Community Cultural and Economic Development.
Thank you, councillor Johnny.
Thank you, Mr Poll. I'm just wondering about this actual recommendation and its wording. Is this locking us in to then dedicating that space to an art gallery? Or is it still going to be out there as a leasable commercial option as part of the portfolio?
Thank you, councillor. Good question. No, it doesn't take that space off the market, so to speak. So I'm sure the leasing team will continue to receive and even pursue opportunities to lease that space. It is committing us as an organisation to saying that we do have this space available. There has been, the feedback from the leasing team is that there's been little interest in that particular space. It's a challenging space for a standard retail offering. So short answer, no, it's not locking us in. And if there was interest from the market, I'm sure the leasing team would pursue that and bring that back to council as per due process.
Okay. It was just under one of the risk points that a decision had to be made by council. given that the other venue tenancies will be open and operating by December.
Yeah, what that risk is probably more talking to is if we see this as a genuine opportunity, the sooner we can pursue it, the better. Again, it's not locking us into this as the only use for that space. But if we are genuinely, as a council, interested in this option, then the sooner we pursue it, the better. Given that a lot of the other tenancies within that venue building will be coming online within the year, within twelve months. So that's why it has been highlighted as a bit of a risk.
Yeah, and then the estimate costs for the construction, have they been qualified by quantity surveyor or anything specifically to understand the escalating cost environment at the moment?
Yeah, so they are just estimates, so we'll be clear about that. But they have been provided by the Nicola Street Precinct team and their technical advisers, based on a basic fit out of that space.
Okay.
As per a couple of the, or one of the concepts that's been provided in the, in the concept attachment.
We know the hiccups that come with these old buildings and spaces and, yeah, when, when necessary, quantity surveyors and building inspectors are required because we, there is difficulty in seeing all of the pitfalls, I guess. As, as a need for a dedicated children's library in our region itself, would this be a location that you would recommend, given that our other growth fronts are not in the Ipswich Central Business District?
Yeah, I understand the point. Council has progressed its thinking and its attention on developing what's referred to as a cultural heart.
Yep.
And that includes everything from the civic centre all the way through to even the children's library and a number of other assets along the way. So there is a, I suppose, a precedent that this is viewed by council and has continued to be invested in by council as a cultural heart. Our view is that would add to this. Likewise, the, I suppose, the efficiency of having a dedicated children's art gallery in proximity to the substantial or the main art gallery, there are efficiencies and I think opportunities there. As it relates to putting something like this in one of the other areas of the LGA, it hasn't been considered as such. We note in the report that the delivery of a dedicated children's art gallery is not something that has been previously been considered. This is more of an opportunistic response to, one, the development of the Nicola Street precinct, two, the development of that idea of a cultural heart. And this fits nicely within both of those programmes of council's work.
Yeah, like I understand that. It's not been flagged before either here or any other part of our region. I guess I'm just weighing up the fact that it's not budgeted and then the operating costs going forward aren't budgeted either. So I don't know what nearly two million is a year on a percentage of rates, but that's something we've got to factor in when we look forward and budget in our long-term financial forecasts and we're trying to move things around. This isn't even there yet. But there are other facilities like this that are required under our plans, future plans elsewhere across our region. So it's a, it's a hard one, I guess. But do you think the leasing opportunities for this area, which is approximately thirteen hundred square metres, do you think when tenancies begin to operate in the venue precinct that that will be more attractive for other leasees to come in and, and want the space?
It's not my area of expertise, obviously, retail leasing, but I think it's reasonable to say that the leasing team will, at some point in time, find someone to take that space. So that has to be part of the decision-making and the consideration, is that there is that leasing, that rental, that council will be in some respects foregoing, if it was leased to a third party. That's part of the consideration being offered up here.
And the QTC modelling and the overall position of the redevelopment, has that been done yet to, I guess, scenario this out? If we were to do this option or?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sorry for ten million questions, but thank you.
If I may just add one additional comment, when we're considering the value outcome here, part of the report does, it's subjective, but it does state that on review, the feedback by the professionals playing in the space is that an art gallery of this type would actually be of a higher value outcome to the broader precinct based on the experience and the offering as compared to what might be a standard retail tenancy, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand that, but we've got, we had our plan in place for anchor tenants to attract traffic already. And then this has kind of come left of centre for us to then contribute to being partially an anchor, if you will. But it's not part of our future plans or mapping of community needs that we kind of lean on and move forward. And it's a hard decision because it looks amazing and I'm, I'm a hundred percent for it if we're in a different position financially and capitally for what we need to achieve with such a growing city and where our areas are growing and where our kids actually are. So it's, it's, this is just me trying to nut it all out, Ben, thank you.
That's what we're here for, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, councillor?
Mr Poll, I just want to try and get clear in my mind. Councillor Johnny quite rightly pointed out the risks that was identified in our papers. My understanding, the risk is around momentum. We have an opportunity now, and we don't want to lose momentum, that is key here. The leasing team have identified this over and over. So if we were to delay investigating this option, it's about lost momentum potentially and lost momentum in pursuing other tenants. So is that not the risk? We need to keep it alive and going. Now is the time, the opportunity is there. It may not necessarily be there for other prospective tenants post cinema opening.
Yeah, I think that's exactly the sentiment that's been raised by the Nicola Street precinct team and others that have been part of these initial conversations about the opportunity.
And just to clarify, the recommendation today, because I completely understand councillor Johnny's concerns that she's outlined, I absolutely get that. But today, and so over the last, I guess, six to eight months during retail subcommittee, we have had lengthy discussions around this. And our chief financial officer has contributed to those discussions, you know, raising the issues that councillor Johnny has raised, operational costs of this going forward compared to asset valuation when we move to being able to sell eventually the Nicola Street precinct teams and the value it would add, having government tenant, all those bits and pieces have been under discussion. We haven't got all the answers and we haven't done all the detailed financial analysis, including work with QTC yet. This will trigger that work to be undertaken as we're also actively seeking funding from the state or feds. We will do further due diligence. We're not committing definitely, you know, we would expect information and papers and reports to come back to us over the next three to six months potentially, answering a lot of the questions.
Just another, sorry, councillor, just another question, I guess, then on that statement councillor Doyle made on momentum. If there is a risk of momentum for the leasing team, but it would still be available for lease, I'm not quite, this is, this is the risk that I'm trying to unpack. I don't want this space to not be available if there is another tenant that comes through that wants the space and it's not us. I don't think that we, as a council, should be committing rate payers' funds to keep the momentum going if there is other opportunities for external tenants to take this space. So that's the risk I want to really nut out here because.
And do you have a question? Sorry, I know that we haven't wanted to discussion yet.
So the momentum question, I guess, is councillor Doyle said that this is important for the momentum of the project to continue. I guess, what does that mean? Chair, sorry.
I'd rather have this discussion when we're in discussion, if it's been moved and seconded. If you have a question for a council officer, then.
Yeah, happy for this to be discussed.
Sorry, I'm speaking. So I'd rather have, have you got questions for the council officer? Are there any other questions?
Mayor, if I may, suggest that the NSP team come forward to answer that particular question, I think is more appropriate. Thank you.
Yeah, help proceeding with this, my impact on the leasing strategy.
And if I ask for counsel to ask questions of council officers in the discussion that we wish to have, we can have that once it's been moved and seconded. Thank you. Any other questions on Mr Poll? Thank you. Are we asking Mr Hepburn? Is that your name and job title?
James Hepburn, I'm the precinct director for Nicola Street.
Okay, councillor Johnny, you have a question?
Hi, Mr Hepburn. Just in relation to the risk of momentum, losing momentum on the Ipswich redevelopment programme, I guess, is that actually a risk with the wording of this recommendation if it's still going to be available for lease to other potential externals?
The leasing momentum to date has very much been around Hoyts and how it plays out facing Nicola Street and the tenancies around that. This particular tenancy we've looked at has always been, probably over the last four years, considered more difficult to lease. It's not to say that we won't lease it. The strategy behind it currently aligns with a showroom-type retailer and more recently, and we've had some demand from children's play areas linked in with a cafe, that sort of thing. There has been no solid offers on that space to date and I don't think anything will really come through until we actually get to the moment of Hoyts and some of the other, the other major tenants opening. If a deal does come forwards, then we will bring it forwards. But I think with the, the location to the art gallery with that initial, we know, demand around children's play already, as a team, you know, we quite like this as we do see it as a really strong anchor and one that will interplay with all the other tenancies and the restaurants. So momentum for me is very much focused around Hoyts and getting that open this year. And some of the ancillary tenants will either play catch-up on that.
Within the fit out works, I guess, will that be happening after this decision is made today? If this goes through, will there be any start to any type of construction or anything for?
This particular tenancy, Hutchinson will take to essentially shell and ready for a fit out. Now, whether that fit out is a children's art gallery or whether it's a showroom is to be determined. So there'll be no extra money spent in that space going either way.
Thank you, I've just got my massive risk hat on, Mr Hepburn, so thank you very much.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hepburn. Just if I may, just confirming the recommendation today is to approve pursuit of Australian Government, Queensland Government, corporate or philanthropic funding for a dedicated children's art gallery. That is all we are doing today?
I believe so, yes.
According to that recommendation. And just want to clarify, when we were talking about momentum and risk, just can you confirm that the leasing team are still working on deals, working with our agents and will present all lease offers very separate to a children's gallery if they do come in? We are working on both options.
Yes, they will. There are weekly meetings with colleagues around new deals coming through and current negotiations and where we're at on, on existing legals with deals that have been approved. And any new interest immediately comes to those meetings and then will flow through to the Retail Sub projects steering committee, in which case it will then start to find its way here if it's an appropriate deal and meets the full brief, sort of deal requirements to progress.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Hepburn?
I have got a question. I'll wait till general.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr Hepburn.
Thank you.
I move the recommendation here. I'm assuming councillor Doyle, will you be seconding? As the mover, I'd like to say that council has invested heavily in reinvigorating our city heart for the social and economic benefit for the Ipswich community. Creating a dedicated children's art gallery would be another amazing addition to the Nicola Street precinct. The gallery would go to the corner of Ellenborough Street and Brisbane Street in the redeveloped venue building that will also house Hoyt Cinemas and many other retail and entertainment venues as well. The report lists the potential for the gallery to attract in attendance about ninety five thousand people each year. As this location is also very close to the top of town, you would expect the flow-on effects to also enhance the visitation across a large portion of Ipswich Central. A children's art gallery also fits in with council's vision to enhance our cultural offerings in our cultural heart of our city that reach from Tumal Place up to the Nicola Street precinct to Darcidore Place, the Ipswich Art Gallery, the Ipswich Civic Centre, over to the top of town and the Ipswich Community Gallery as well and the civic centre. We are a city of young people with a six point seven percent higher proportion of households with children than the rest of South East Queensland. Here in Ipswich, forty seven point eight percent of households have children. Our largest age group is five to nine-year-olds, which is eight point one percent, and that is eight and a half thousand young people. And we want to ensure that we are providing opportunities for their growth and their development here right in Ipswich. We know we are on the right path because of the massive success of the award-winning dedicated standalone children's library here in Ipswich Central, which is generating around seventeen thousand visits per month or over two hundred and five thousand visits per year. We also know that the Ipswich Art Gallery is highly successful and the children's programming is at capacity and clearly oversubscribed. You just need to go there during the school holidays to see that. There's certainly not enough room to be able to expand that facility and to accommodate additional programming. By doing this, it will also increase the capacity of the Ipswich Art Gallery for other exhibitions and programming. We are seeing growing confidence in our emerging city cultural heart precinct with more and more tenants moving each month. Today, we approved to enter into four new leases, which is showing the momentum that is happening in the Nicola Street precinct. With state and federal and commercial support for the capital of three million and there have been initial discussions with the state and the federal governments, a dedicated children's art gallery at this time, at this prime site, would build on the success we're already seeing in the Nicola Street precinct. We do note, I do note, that a future council, if this does come forward, will need to address the fact that there is that operating budget of one point six million dollars each year. And that'll be a decision for a future council, but they'll have that opportunity to at least review that and make that decision. In a short five years, the people of Ipswich have seen their city centre transformed from a rundown and neglected mall to a modern entertainment and dining precinct. Informed by independent financial experts, we continue to place the community at the centre of our decision-making. Based on securing funding, these preliminary investigations give me great confidence that a dedicated children's art gallery is more than worthy of further investigation. This recommendation is not committing council to spend capital or anything like that. I think it's very worthy for us to investigate this, want this opportunity. Councillor Doyle is the second, do you wish to speak to it?
Thank you, Mayor. The standalone children's art gallery, in my personal view, will be an exciting addition to Ipswich's cultural heart and the continuing revitalisation of Ipswich Central. A dedicated children's gallery will build on the success of the Ipswich Children's Library, Australia's first standalone children's library. We know our visitor numbers, both residents and families outside of Ipswich are significant during school holidays.
Um, therefore leading to, um, great opportunities, um, from an economic development point of view for our, our local businesses and our local economy. Um. So we, we've had, you know, so many families visit from outside of Ipswich and, um, and yes, significant during the school holidays. Explore creating a new, unique, new venue, um, that perfectly complements our existing cultural assets and which promises to draw, um, thousands of more, um, visitors each, uh, year. Um, and, and yes, I guess when we think about the original intention, um, behind the scheme, the strategy here for Nicholas Street precinct and the Ipswich Central revitalisation, um, and this predates me, and I know councillor Tully can speak to this. It was never going to be about retail. It was food, leisure, entertainment and cul- and, and a cultural, um, heart. They're, they're the ingredients that are considered successful, um, as opposed to retail shopping centres, which we have seen are on the decline as a result of online shopping and, and other, um, things. So it has been compared before, um, what we're doing here to South Bank, for instance, where you will have, um, lots of food and entertainment and of course that amazing performing arts precinct that's there. Um, significant work is already underway to enhance, um, capacity, um, of Ipswich Central cultural assets such as, um, the Darcy Doyle Place revitalisation and the Ipswich Cent-, uh, Civic Centre redevelopment. Um, Darcy Doyle Place, um, to, sorry, to improve the connectivity between these assets. Top of Town and the wider CBD, uh, the children's art gallery will be a key and strategic piece in our revi- in our revitalisation of Ips- of Ipswich Central, encouraging pedestrian traffic to flow between downtown, top of town and Nicholas Street. Um, again, in my view, a children's gallery, gallery perfectly complements our much-loved and eclectic mix of businesses, small businesses in the top of town. Undoubtedly, our small businesses in the top of town has, have suffered terribly through the demise of our CBD. Um, and many businesses have sadly not survived. Um, our local property owners, um, as well have suffered greatly through, um, diminished ability for, for rental. Um. So yes, I'm delighted that the Ellenborough Street, um, corner will deliver potentially some, um, such an amazing asset, not only for our residents but for our surrounding small businesses. It's the gateway to our beautiful and, and much-loved eclectic, um, top of town. Um, bringing the bustle back to Brisbane Street, um, as I like to call it. Um, that's Brisbane Street running from top of town, um, past, um, Ellenborough Street and through to Nicholas Street. The way pedestrians used to move about in Ipswich Town back in the day. Um, and that was taken away from us, um, when the North Star Hotel was demolished sadly. Um, and what currently sits there on the corner of Ellenborough and Brisbane Street, known as venue, not the prettiest building in the world, um, and that created that diagonal, um, walk-through, that connector. So it took away Brisbane Street traffic, pedestrian traffic, and businesses at the top of the old mall suffered terribly. Um, because they were bypassed as, as people walked through the centre of, of, um, of venue. Um. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I'll let, yes, councillor.
Um, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess I'm not in favour of going ahead with anything because, um, it gets a leg, legs of its own and it's five million dollars that's unbudgeted. Um, I just think this should be held over for the new council. That's my opinion.
Thank you, councillor. Any other discussion? Thank you, councillor Johnny.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, honestly think that the idea of a dedicated children's art gallery in Ipswich CBD would be great. Um, I'm just risking scenario building this out. Um, and I concur with the comments made by councillor, uh, Doyle and Mayor Harding um, about the success of our current art gallery and the visitation numbers during the school holidays. Um, my opinion is obviously might not be popular. Um, but I guess we're here to make difficult decisions and have robust conversations, um, using the tools that are afforded to us, which is our plans and our forecast models. So, um, the report states that there is no prior or current plans relating to this item. Um, this is not listed in any future plans or long-term financial forecast, um, that we use to guide us on current and future assets that our communities need, not just in the CBD, but in the wider region of Ipswich. Um, the revenue that this idea takes away from the forecasts and modelling by QTC um, is, is concerning to not see that yet, the, the forecast and the modelings for that. Um, perhaps the, something could be changed in the recommendation. I'm assuming that it could be, um, funding for a dedicated children's art gallery on level one is quite certain to me. Where it could be, um, a concept of that, um, would be, I'd be more comfortable with. Uh, we're a city of centres and we have a need for facilities like this elsewhere across the Ipswich region. In our high-growth, uh, regions with higher proportions of children than Ipswich Central, such as Ripley. There is no point supporting these kids, um, if their families can't drive them from growth areas where they live to the Ipswich CBD because critical road and transport networks aren't moving, uh, up the list of priorities of this council. So this is where and what I'm talking about. When it comes to these decisions, we need to kind of put a fork in it and go, hey, let's get all the information that we possibly need before we make any commitments, especially going into, um, and into a new council. So thinking if we can maybe amend some of that recommendation to put like a concept word in there, then I might be comfortable going out, but other than that, I'm, I'm not comfortable.
Thank you. Um, I'll speak and reply and then it will, uh, go to a, a vote. Um, I note that this, and I know councillor John, you started talking about the fact that you'd like to get all the information. I, I see this recommendation as the giving council the permission to get that information. It's an investigation. It's, um, to approve the pursuit of seeking funding. It's not committing council to any capital or operational works. That'll be a decision of a future council. So I'll be supporting this because it does give council that opportunity to pursue what are the options? It may be great, it may be not, but at the moment, the organisation doesn't have that permission to go out and do that. So I'm very, um, very supportive of going out and investigating to see how this would plan out. Um, so at that, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's myself, councillor Cornsmun, councillor Milligan and councillor Doyle. Those against? The councillor Island, councillor Johnic and councillor Tully. The motion has passed. Thank you very much. And thank you very much for, um, having such a professional, uh, robust discussion about it too. Thank you very much. I now wait for councillor Fettin and councillor Madison to, uh, to come back for, uh, the last item, sixteen point fourteen. Thank you. Welcome back. Uh, we're now on the, the, the last item, the sixteen point fourteen, which is the proposed Ripley Road Catalyst Infrastructure Agreement. And this is a report concerning, the, uh, this is a report concerning the proposed execution of a catalyst infrastructure agreement for the delivery of Ripley Road construction works between Cunningham, Cunningham Highway and Fisher Road. Now, I am going to ask a council officer to come and to explain to you because it is the, the financing of it, how this is, the planning of it is complex. I ask councils to make sure that they ask council officers questions. We will obviously go into discussion of this, but I think it's really important, um, that we do ask a few questions on the funding and timing and planning of this. So may I ask for the relevant council officer to come forward, please?
Good morning. Brett Davy, General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services.
Mr. Davy, do you mind explaining why, um, within the Ripley Valley Priority Development Area, why the funding arrangements are different to any other part of Ipswich?
Okay, um, I'll try and keep it simple. So the Ripley Valley is its own planning instrument, a priority development area. And with that comes its own planning scheme, uh, and infrastructure plan. So the equivalent in the rest of Ipswich is essentially the Ipswich Planning Scheme and the local government infrastructure plan. For Ripley, it's a Ripley PDA and a document called the D-COP, Development Charges and Offsets Plan. So in that framework, when the state set up the priority development areas, they also set up what's called a catalyst fund. So it's an ongoing fund, uh, the amount that's funded each year is variable. And the idea of that fund is it assists in the delivery of major infrastructure that's going to benefit multiple development fronts in PDAs. So in, uh, there's been a couple of different funds announced. The latest fund was announced in two thousand and twenty-two and it was a hundred and fifty million dollar fund. We, uh, were already in planning to consider Ripley Road. And when that fund came out, we expressed interest in getting access to the fund. Uh, essentially it will assist with cash flow for the delivery of those assets.
Thank you. Um, so where does the money for the catalyst fund come from?
It's essentially a treasury loan from the Queensland Government.
Okay. Um, but it's paid from the infrastructure charges from residents?
Correct. So for infrastructure charges in Ripley, a percentage of every charge that's levied and collected on every, you know, new lot and every commercial development is set aside for catalyst loan repayments. So that helps deliver this.
Okay. And that, I think it's about thirty-five thousand for each lot?
Yes, for Ripley, it's a little bit higher than the rest of the city, but around thirty-five. And the catalyst component of that is around five thousand dollars per lot.
Okay. That catalyst component, does that go also towards the schools as well or is it just on the trunk infrastructure?
It can be any trunk infrastructure, but it's not been applied to the likes of schools, community assets, uh, but it could be used for any transport, uh, major open space. The criteria is that it's got to benefit multiple, um, developers and, uh, development fronts and also open up areas for development.
Um, are there any other questions of Mr. Davy? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, so recommendations A through to C state that council, we're authorising, council authorised the, the CEO to finalise the negotiations with Economic Development Queensland, which managed those funds and the planning there, regarding the proposed Ripley Road infrastructure agreement. And that the chief executive officer being satisfied that the negotiations have been finalised in accordance with the recommendation, A, that council authorised the CEO to finalise and execute that Ripley infrastructure agreement on behalf of council and do other acts necessary to implement council's decision. And that upon execution of the Ripley infrastructure agreement, an updated report be provided to council at the next available council meeting outlining all relevant matters contained in the Ripley infrastructure agreement. So I'll move A through to C. Do I have a seconda for that? Thank you, councillor Madison. Um, in speaking to this, um, the Ripley Valley area is growing at a rapid pace and that trunk infrastructure to support this growth is desperately needed. The road tr- trunk infrastructure is overdue and should have been completed many, many years ago. Uh, we are the fastest-growing city in Queensland and we do require significant transport investment from all levels of government to keep our city moving. Um, this infrastructure agreement is looking at upgrading the Ripley Road to a four-lane median divided urban arterial road and Fisher Road into a two-lane urban sub- arterial road. And if it's advancing, if it's successful, uh, we'll be able to access the catalyst funding for the first time to deliver these much-needed upgrades. And I often get asked about the difference between the developments in Springfield and Ripley. And in Springfield, by and large, the, the, um, there is one developer, so they can sequence things. In, in Ripley, we have around twenty-six landowners, so it's much more complex, uh, to manage when it comes to sequencing infrastructure and who pays for what. So I think this is a terrific way forward and I know that the Division One councils will probably speak into more detail. But I thank you very much for bringing forward the notice of motion sometime, I think, in twenty-twenty-two to ensure that we could access these funding. So I'll hand over to councillor Madison as the seconda.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. This is certainly a overdue, um, item, um, for a lot of related reasons. There's a lot of, um, difficulty navigating, um, responsibilities of the state and the local government and, you know, a dozen to fifteen developers all with different ideas about what should be done first. Um, what's really important for people to understand is it's ended up being a good outcome for council, um, where the development will be paid for, um, or the road development, um, will be primarily paid for by the infrastructure charges. Um, that's an important thing that comes across, um, to councillor Island and I frequently, where some people suggest that the new stuff's going in at Ripley. And, um, people are generally speaking paying for that through what they take a mortgage out on in their hu- house and land package. Um, it's, it's not a big, um, impost currently on council's general, general revenue. Um. Look, um, it's, it is quite easy to make statements about it being overdue and that, but it really has been a mammoth task, um, from the council officers that have worked on this to get it to a position where council's interests are protected. Um, some of the history was the state kind of just announced the priority development area and, um, expected the council to come to the party, even though as a council you have your own longer-term views and, um, other obligations elsewhere. Um, I still think that that's a working piece for the state to understand the impost on local councils that their development areas can be. Um, I'd like to see transport and main roads be a lot more proactive in the area. There's certainly a lot of state road interests that, um, I'm really worried about whether or not they're even thinking about it. Um, but in this regard, councils ended up taking a good leadership position where instead of having the catalyst infrastructure delivered by individual developers who have their own timeframes and, um, commercial interests, council will take on a bigger piece and coordinate it. And, um, through that, I think we'll see more working together in the Ripley area than what we would have otherwise seen, um, such as the nature of business and other interests. Um, so I think it's good. It's actually in itself quite landmarked that council could even apply for catalyst infrastructure funding. Previous rounds, um, council weren't able to submit, is my understanding. And, um, we saw outcomes like the matter at Binney's Road where catalyst infrastructure funding was provided, but not enough to actually complete the road, which has really frustrated a lot of people. Um, so this particular section where it was a bit unclear on, on who could be held ultimately responsible, um, we've stepped in and provided leadership and for what is the main thoroughfare that is a problem. Um, soon enough, um, we'll see an upgrade in place, which in itself is an accomplishment for the council staff to have navigated that with the state. Um, I'm not sure I could have been as patient, um, with some of the deliberations. But, um, when you sit back and you take a more holistic view of things, it is absolutely vital that, that people cross their Ts and dot their Is and, you know, limit exposure and other things. Um, so it's, it's frustrating because you don't see the shovels on the ground and other aspects, but a lot of, um, work has been into securing council's interest. And so I'd like to thank everyone who's worked on that. Um, as long-winded as the process has been, um, we're, we're in a good position now because of that.
Thank you, councillor Madison. Councillor Island?
I'd like to, um, second all the comments that councillor Madison has made. Um, I'm just asked that when we do the release, that we make it clear to the residents that they're not going to see any action, at least for twelve months, because everyone's going to think, oh, good, it's been approved, there's money for it. Um, and they, the, the queuing out there coming across the highway is, um, quite troublesome. Um, so I'd like to, uh, congratulate everybody that we've got to this point. But, um, if we could just make the release very clear that it's only in the planning stage and they won't see any actual work happening, um, for a few months at least. Please.
Thank you, councillor Island. Also note that, um, you see in the reports that, um, the previous council that you're part of, um, tried very hard also to get the catalyst funding, uh, from the state government. And there was that council resolution two thousand and seventeen stopping funding, I, I think out of frustration. Um, and I think it was, um, the member for Jordan, Charis Mullin MP, said that her experience with the PDAs down in, in Logan, that they have a, a PDA forum. And so we, a couple of years ago instituted that with the Department of State Development and, and EDQ and other areas. And that's been really fruitful and I think really positioned us well for when this catalyst funding, um, came forward. And obviously, um, I think when the Division One councils put forward the resolutions in two thou- in January and November twenty-twenty-two. And obviously, I think one of the Division One councils put forward the resolutions in January and November 2022 to look at that. May I encourage people to please go to Shape Your Ipswich? There's a great new page that's just been, I think, released in the last week on the Ripley Road and Fisher Road upgrades. It goes into some detail around the fact that at the moment we'll be doing design work if this proceeds. It also goes into some of the history and the funding, as well as the four different stages of the roads there as well. And if there are other queries that you have, please contact us at council and we can answer them. And if you've got that question, probably other people do too, so we can add that to the frequently asked questions on that particular page. Our intent is to let people know how things are progressing, but this is a, this goes ahead, this will be a huge step forward. I want to thank the Council Madsen, Council Island for your advocacy, your constant advocacy for this as well. Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We go to item 17, notices of motion, there are nil. 18 questions on notice, there are nil. So I will close the meeting now at 12:07. Thank you.